Buenas noches, todos. Estoy contento de que pudieras encontrar dos o tres asientos juntos esta noche. Bien, bienvenidos a aquellos de ustedes que están viendo en línea también. Si esto es como fue el año pasado, habrá más gente viendo en línea que están en la sala. Para aquellos de ustedes que están en la sala, estoy contento de que estén en la sala. Nos divertiremos juntos de la compañía. Parece que te ves muy solo ahí abajo, ¿estás bien? Lo veo, es penance ahí arriba, lo creo. Así que aquí es lo que queremos hacer esta noche. Esta es una noche realmente casual y relajada. Todavía estamos contentos de que nosotros como equipo, personal, podamos compartir con ustedes algunas de las cosas que Jesús está haciendo aquí en Copper Hills. Hacemos un town hall, no sé si ese es el nombre correcto para lo que hacemos, pero eso es lo que llamamos. Donde es nuestra oportunidad de sentarse frente a nuestra familia de iglesia a quien servimos y de contarte algunas de las historias y algunas de las cosas. Y para algunos de ustedes, esta será su primera vez realmente encontrándose cara a cara o en línea con nuestro equipo. Y así estamos contentos de presentarnos con ustedes. Nos darán una actualización financiera de donde estamos como familia de iglesia un poco más tarde en la presentación y un resumen del presupuesto de año que viene para que puedan mirar. Pero más que nada es bueno estar juntos así y de la manera en que somos. Así que quiero invitarlos a rezar conmigo y luego les diré dónde vamos. Jesús, nos pertenece a ti. Tú compraste nuestras vidas con tu vida. Y celebramos esa verdad para nosotros. Esta noche, mientras nos reunimos, queremos que sepan que nos reunimos alrededor de ti y que existimos por ti. Y tú eres el que amamos porque hemos sido amados primero por ti. Así que esta noche, mientras hablamos, que nuestra conversación realmente te honre. Que incluso los números que presentamos y las historias que contamos y las introducciones que están aquí, que sean una adoración para ti. Y que te dé la alegría con nuestro tiempo juntos. Gracias, Jesús. Amén. Así que este es Marquis, junto a mí aquí. Él es nuestro líder anciano. Oh, eso es bueno. Sí, y este es tu micrófono. Dime hola a todos.
Hola, a todos.
Pueden ver en la pantalla justo ahora un número que cualquier momento esta noche, ya sea que se unan a nosotros en línea o aquí en la sala, pueden texting ese número que irá directamente a Marquis. También habrá una oportunidad hacia el final, hay dos mikes aquí si prefieren hacer su pregunta en persona. Lo harán, es un poco más difícil si estás en línea, pero si te agarras, podrías llegar aquí a hacer tu pregunta en persona también si quieres. Así que aquí es donde quiero empezar, quiero llevarnos a lo que es nuestro "por qué". El pastor Matt hizo un gran trabajo este domingo pasado enseñando de la Biblia de lo que todo esto se trata. Pero en resumen, nuestra declaración inicial de misión era esta declaración pitidez. Queremos ayudar a las personas que amamos a conectarse a Jesús a quien amamos, lo que no es malo, es que se rola de la lengua. Pero... ¿qué es eso? Eso es todo lo que teníamos, eso es correcto, eso es correcto. Pero durante los últimos 15 años o así, esta noción, esta idea de nosotros ayudando unos a otros cada vez más hacer cada momento con Jesús, el magnífico y el ordinario, el increíble y simplemente el esfuerzo diario de la vida juntos con él. Conscientemente, intencionalmente e incidentalmente. Porque lo que hemos encontrado es que cuando hacemos eso, cuando ese es nuestro patrón de la vida, nuestro pensamiento comienza a cambiar y comenzamos a pensar cada vez más como Jesús piensa. Como las escrituras nos muestran que él piensa. Hay este maravilloso pasaje que Pablo escribe en 1 Corintios 2:16, él dice: ¿Quién sabe la mente del Señor? ¿Y quién ha sido su consejero?, como si decir, bueno, él no necesita uno. Pero tú has sido dado la mente de Cristo. Y está hablando de nosotros, que podemos pensar como Cristo porque su espíritu está con nosotros. Así que lo que hemos descubierto es que mientras cada vez hacemos la vida intencionalmente e incidentalmente con Jesús, cada vez pensamos como Jesús y ahora paramos de tratar de comportarnos como él. Pero nos comportamos como él porque él ha capturado nuestra mente, nuestra imaginación y nuestra voluntad. Y la gente mira a nosotros y dicen, si Jesús es así, también quiero Jesús en mi vida. Y así es todo lo que hacemos, centrales alrededor de esa noción, tratando de ayudar unos a otros cada vez más a hacer la vida con Jesús. Así que pensamos cada vez más como él y estamos cada vez más equivocados por él. Ahora, hay algo más que nos guía y es lo que llamamos proceso de ministerio. Si ese es nuestro "por qué", este es nuestro "cómo". Así que lo que pensamos de todo ministerio es como una relación que crece y profundiza. Así que algunas iglesias tienen como un lado evangélico y un lado discípulos, pero la tendencia es enfatizar uno sobre el otro. Y hemos dicho, no queremos hacer eso, queremos tener una visión holística de que el camino con Jesús es más como una relación. Si quieres usar un ejemplo de tu relación más profunda con cualquiera que pueda ser, un esposo o un amigo o un miembro de la familia, o lo que sea, empieza sin saberlo y luego el día siguiente no los conoces. Hay un crecimiento a eso, hay un proceso en construir esa amistad y esa relación, ese matrimonio, lo que sea que la relación sea. Así es con Jesús. Tenemos gente a nuestro alrededor que son dudadores, dudan, cuestionan. Y no queremos perder en darnos nuestro tiempo y atención, nuestro esfuerzo, nuestros recursos para ayudarles a comenzar a pensar en Jesús. Pueden no pensar como ellos todavía, pueden no hacer la vida con ellos. Pero queremos ayudar a esos dudadores, escépticos y cinicenses a comenzar a hacer su vida con él. Pensamos desde el dudado, se vuelven exploradores. Tal vez tu vida es tan interesante para ellos y tu camino con Jesús que empiezan a explorar quién es Jesús porque venlo en ti. Exploradores, confiamos que van a llegar a un punto de decisión y dar sus vidas a Jesús y ser reawburados espiritualmente para tener una vida espiritual en sus corazones y vidas. Y luego por primera vez pueden crecer espiritualmente, no solo crecer en conocimiento religioso, pero pueden crecer espiritualmente. Pueden tener un torrente de agua viva, un torrente perpetuo que llega a sus almas cuando dicen sí a Jesús. Y luego queremos verlos profundizar su camino, crecer cerca de Jesús, caminar más cerca de él y hacer eso juntos en comunidad. Y finalmente nos gustaría ver, nos encantaría ver sus vidas centradas en Jesús. Ahora, la esquina izquierda inferior es la vida familiar. Hacen lo similar, pero son un grupo de edad amplio que pensamos menos de ese círculo, pero más de cómo si tuviéramos el privilegio de tener un hijo nacido en una familia en nuestra iglesia y tuviéramos a ellos con nosotros durante 18, 19, 20, 21 años, ¿quién se convertirían? ¿Qué tipo de persona se convertirían? ¿Qué necesitarían saber? ¿Qué tipo de carácter querríamos verlos crecer? Y así lo representamos un poco diferente, pero es la misma noción, la misma idea que tenemos para eso. Así que todo lo que hacemos, presuponemos alrededor de esto, personalizamos alrededor de esto, planeamos ministerios alrededor de esta idea y evaluamos lo que estamos haciendo para asegurarnos de que ese camino está sucediendo en la vida de la gente. Así que esta noche, lo que vas a escuchar son las diversas equipos que están involucrados en esas seis o siete áreas de ese círculo o en el continuo de la vida familiar. Así que aquí es lo que vamos a hacer. Introducir a esta equipo a ustedes primero. Esta es la equipo de dudado. Y eso es, no son dudadores, pero miran después de dudadores. Está bien, así que aquí es donde quiero empezar. Vais a notar justo debajo de dudar es "tomar nota, tomar interés". Eso es, gracias por el gorro, amigo, eso es realmente genial. Nuestra estrategia de evangelismo empieza alrededor de esto. Lo oyeron hace dos semanas, no vives donde vives, trabaja donde trabajas, juegas donde juegas, vas a la escuela donde vas a la escuela porque ese es un gran lugar para vivir, espero que sea. La escuela es justo, todas esas cosas. Tú eres un agente para Jesús y él ha puestote allí para ser una influencia para él en la vida de las personas que están en esa esfera. Y así, esto es algo que verás regularmente, consistentemente, lo ves en la parte trasera del gorro de Marquis y un montón de otros gorros que están alrededor, solo destinados a recordarnos que somos los que... El peso de la alegría de la Gósped está en nosotros y somos los agentes para eso donde Jesús nos haya puesto. Luego tenemos un par de áreas específicas que hemos desarrollado para ayudar a apoyar lo que tú y yo ya estamos involucrados en la vida de la gente. Un lugar para traer a un amigo, un lugar para traer a un vecino, un lugar para traer a alguien de trabajo donde podrían descubrir el maravilloso de una conversación con ustedes, tal vez alrededor de los artes o en nuestra cafetería. Y así Kathy, ¿por qué no venges? Una de las áreas que es una herramienta para nosotros y ha sido durante los últimos seis años, acaba de cumplir su sexto cumpleaños, ¿verdad? Nuestro centro para los artes. Así que Kathy, cuéntanos un poco de Centro para los Artes.
Me encantaría. Es mi gran alegría poder liderar nuestra increíble equipo de enseñanza en el Centro para los Artes y campeón el buen trabajo que obtenemos allí, como Brad dijo, durante seis años. Hemos puesto nuestros puntos en la idea salvaje de que las personas de diversas perspectivas de la vida, experiencias de la vida y una variedad completa de prioridades de fe podrían construir comunidad alrededor de intereses comunes como música, arte, danza y teatro. Y así priorizamos en el Centro para los Artes construir relaciones con el objetivo de enseñar gran arte y comenzar conversaciones que podrían construir curiosidad y llevar a la gente hacia una verdadera transformación de la vida. Así que, ¿cómo sucede eso? Bueno, en todo lo que hacemos, empezamos con Jesús, tiene que ser primero Jesús, relaciones segundo y arte grande tercer. Y estamos realmente intencionalmente asegurándonos de que está en ese orden. Jesús, relaciones entre sí y realmente, realmente, arte grande. Nuestro equipo de enseñanza, tenemos un personal de alrededor de 40 maestros que trabajan en el Centro para los Artes. Están comprometidos en usar su fe, usar su amor por Jesús hacia este increíble objetivo cada día. Uno de nuestros maestros de guitarra, por ejemplo, decidió preguntarle a cada estudiante en su estudio de guitarra la pregunta: ¿Quién es Jesús para ti? Y estaba tan sorprendido de averiguar que casi todos los coulda realmente no respondieron la pregunta. Fue una pregunta difícil para ellos, algunos no tenían idea y otros sorteo estremecieron un poco. Pero la puerta se abrió ampliamente para él en estos últimos meses para tener conversaciones de seguimiento y ayudarlos a descubrir la respuesta a la pregunta: ¿Quién es Jesús y cómo puede hacer una diferencia en tu vida? Se sintió promptado para hacer esa pregunta y ha llevado a cosas increíbles durante estos últimos varios meses. En nuestro estudio de danza, cada año tenemos un espectacular recital de danza en esta misma habitación. Y cuando rehechamos para esos recitos de danza, las canciones, es un proceso repetitivo, ¿verdad? Así que las letras de las canciones juegan una y otra y otra vez en la mente del bailarín. Así que hay gran oración y atención que va a elegir las canciones que usamos para ese recital. Y uno de nuestros maestros se sintió particularmente promptado para que una canción que sabía podía llevar a conversaciones sobre autovalores y amistades auténticas. Lo que ella no sabía, pero el Espíritu Santo sabía, creemos, fue que varios estudiantes de esa clase en particular en ese mismo momento estaban luchando con la desprecianza y incluso en algunos casos, el daño propio. Y así, por supuesto, tan pronto como el maestro sabía de eso, ella trajo a los padres a la conversación que eran increíblemente agradecidos. Y llevó a algunas conversaciones realmente transparentes con estos estudiantes. Dándoles la oportunidad de hablar, algunos de ellos por primera vez, sobre cómo se veían a sí mismos. Y luego dando el maestro la oportunidad de responder a partir de la fe y el amor por Jesús que tiene en su vida, decirles: "Tú tienes valor, tú estás necesito, Jesús te creó a propósito, para un propósito en este mismo momento. No pienses nunca nada menos de ti mismo que lo que Jesús dice que eres". Y para que eso sea la narrativa y la transición de perspectiva en las vidas de esos bailarines. Se sucede todos los días en nuestro estudio de danza, en nuestro estudio de música, en nuestros estudios de arte. ¿Sabías que tenemos clases de arte adulto? Deberías venir totalmente. Te hablaré de eso en un segundo. En uno de nuestros últimos clases de adultos, uno de los estudiantes, como todos hacemos, estaba gruñendo sobre no amar su pintura. Y así el maestro de arte la tomó, le preguntó si podía tomarla y caminó varios pies lejos, la mantuvo y le pidió al estudiante que la mirara de nuevo. Y a distancia, el estudiante estaba tan sorprendido, en realidad amaba su pintura. Y esa transición de perspectiva habría sido algo cool solo en su propia. Pero el maestro aprovechó ese momento y creemos, promptado por el Espíritu Santo, lo convirtió en una conversación sobre Dios para decir, sabes, eso es exactamente como Dios nos ve. Él nos creó, él sabe nuestros defectos, él sabe nuestras inconsistencias, nuestros bordes duros y aún así ve el panorama grande y nos ama completamente y completamente. Así que ella tomó solo un pequeño comentario que un estudiante estaba haciendo y cambió la conversación hacia Dios. La última historia, en uno de nuestros estudios de música, el maestro tiene un número inusualmente alto de estudiantes hindúes. Tiene nueve o diez estudiantes hindúes en su estudio de voz y piano. En el otoño, hay muchos festivales hindúes y así ella ha decidido aprender sobre algunos de estos festivales hindúes para el propósito de tener conversaciones con sus estudiantes, para tomar interés y tomar nota de algo que es importante en sus vidas. Pero para el propósito y sabiendo que podría llevar a que ella tenga la oportunidad de compartir sobre su fe y su confianza en Jesús. Así que rezamos como locos que durante este otoño esas conversaciones pueden llevar a algunas cosas realmente importantes y la oportunidad de hablar sobre el Día de Navidad, por ejemplo, por qué celebramos el Día de Navidad y el nacimiento de Jesús y lo que significa Jesús en nuestras vidas. Así que en general, en el Centro para los Artes, simplemente no podemos superar el hecho de que podamos infundir el amor de Jesús y la positividad de tal manera intencional. Podemos respirar la vida en estos estudiantes y ayudar a dirigir sus barcos hacia cosas que son reales y verdaderas y cosas duras, transformadoras. Así que muchas gracias por colaborar con nosotros. Matt lo mencionó en la iglesia hace varias semanas, pero tenemos al menos 600 estudiantes y sus familias en campus cada semana entre nuestro estudio de música, el estudio de danza, teatro y nuestros estudios de arte. Esa es una responsabilidad increíble. Muchas gracias por colaborar con nosotros hacia esta increíble misión que tenemos, usar los artes como una herramienta para alcanzar a la gente para Jesús. Gracias por colaborar con tus oraciones para nuestros maestros y nuestros estudiantes. Gracias por colaborar con tus finanzas. Este campus es increíble, no puedo creer que llegue a trabajar aquí, es hermoso todos los días. Gracias por hacer posible tener este hermoso lugar, es una luz en nuestra comunidad y tú eres parte de eso. Y gracias por colaborar con nosotros por tu participación. Escuchas que a veces el café y el Centro para los Artes, lo vi, que el café y el Centro para los Artes no son para ti y no para nosotros, eso es cierto, excepto hasta el punto en que lo aprovechas para traer a alguien que aún no sabe a Jesús. Y así vengan a nuestras clases, traigan a un vecino o un amigo, a un coestable y experimenten algo cool juntos, creando algo juntos y ve cómo el Centro para los Artes y tú puedes construir el Reino de Dios. Amamos lo que hacemos todos los días y esperamos un gran año adelante.
Buena suerte, Kathy, buena suerte.
Kathy, antes de que te vayas. Sí, el camino lunar para nosotros allí. Teníamos una pregunta desde fuera de la comunidad. Respecto al Centro para los Artes, ¿los 40 maestros asisten a Copper Hills?
Algunos de ellos sí, no todos, diría que probablemente menos de la mitad asisten a Copper Hills, pero son amantes de Jesús que asisten en otros lugares. Y algunos asisten aquí, tenemos a un par de ustedes en esta misma habitación, en realidad.
Creo que podría valer la pena decir que cada uno de nuestros instructores pasa por nuestra declaración de fe y ellos se unen y lo firman, lo cual en ese sentido, ellos aman a Jesús y están compartiendo la vida con él incluso si no están en nuestra iglesia. Y así, sí. A veces no hablamos lo suficiente de nuestra historia en ese lado. Este otoño pasado, Kathy fue preguntada para ser la oradora de complicación en su alma materna porque han oído sobre las cosas que ella y Jesús están haciendo a través de este Centro para los Artes y ella tuvo el privilegio de adorar a Jesús al contar la historia en el colegio que fue a donde fue. Kathy y Brian han sido parte de Copper Hills por casi 27 años. Kathy ha sido empleado en cuatro diferentes ocasiones durante 25 años. Ella es una persona increíble, devota y dedicada a ti en esta iglesia y Kathy, muchas gracias. Sí, Kev. La otra área, Kev, ¿quieres decir algo o solo quieres mostrar el video? Está bien, la compañía de Well Coffee es la segunda herramienta que usamos para apoyar la iniciativa "tomar nota, tomar interés" en nuestras vidas. Y así, miren esto.
The well is inspired to do and to become great, but great for purpose, to be relational, to use whatever you have to find and discover that's in you in the relationships and then give it out. Give it out freely, give it out openly. Tenemos debajo de nuestro logotipo "Comunidad importa" y creo que eso es una parte realmente grande de lo que estamos aquí para, la comunidad. Jesús quería comunidad y también nosotros. Hola, soy Kevin Cabala y soy el visionero principal de Well Coffee. Eso significa que he reunido y creado la idea de cómo íbamos a hacer Well Coffee, desde el menú y el diseño y el diseño hasta todo lo que un dueño de negocio haría para crear un pequeño negocio. Hay esta hermosa historia en la Biblia en John 4. Hay esta mujer que tiene que salir sola, se ve algo descuidada y está fuera de este lugar donde hay un agua seccha y se encuentra con alguien, Jesús, él le ofrece algo de agua viva y ella llegó a la agua y se fue con la vida eterna en Cristo y cambió mucho a ella, regresó y cambió su comunidad. Ahora, solo estamos en café ahora mismo, pero la idea de que puedes venir y tener una relación y alguien te verá donde estás, no te juzgará donde estés, pero te invita y te ofrece esperanza y alegría, eso es, eso impacta. Pensamos que hay tantos lugares donde vas a negociar y hay un intercambio. Hay dinero y hay un producto. No estamos realmente grandes en el lado del dinero y no estamos tratando de vender un producto. Estamos tratando de construir una relación. Y así hay un intercambio, por supuesto, para quedarse en el negocio, pero no hay motivo alterno. No estoy buscando multiplicar de esa manera, estoy buscando tratar de multiplicar el corazón y el amor de lo que una comunidad parece. Es una familia, miran a los demás, cuidan mutuamente, hacemos todo tipo de eventos juntos, celebraciones especiales. Tienes que ver estas brisas de cuán felices están, cantan juntos, danza, hacen todas estas cosas. Tienen mucho diversión trabajando aquí. Nuestro espacio se ha convertido en como un fondo para la vida. Hay reuniones aquí, hay startups, primeras citas. Todo lo que estamos basado en cómo estamos creciendo es a través de una verdadera relación. Así que si vuelves, es porque estabas con todas tus necesidades o excediste tus necesidades. Y si traes a alguien con ti, es porque fue suficiente para impresionarte. Quiero traer gente aquí para que podamos compartir eso. Así que creo que eso es realmente genial, espero que eso es lo que experimentas aquí, no solo que te sientas visto y oído, sino que querrías volver y tener a otras personas visto y oídas también.
Está bien. Es realmente increíble lo que sucede. Sabes, tenemos, ¿sabes, Marquis, tenemos la mayor cafetería en Arizona?
No lo sabía.
Sí, lo hacemos.
¿La mayor?
La mayor cafetería en Arizona.
Oh, sí.
Solo la fotografía cuadrada de todo lo que tenemos porque todos se sienten donde sea que esté ahí fuera. Y es realmente increíble lo que sucede en esas conversaciones. Kev, gracias por tu gran liderazgo en eso, fantástico. Está bien, así que eso es, déjame volver, ¿tienes una pregunta?
Sí, así que Kevin, tenemos una pregunta, oh, la misma persona también, amo, cualquiera que sea, te amo. Está bien, así que aquí es tu pregunta, Kevin. The well, ¿es Kevin el dueño, oops, ven ahora, usando el espacio en la iglesia o opera para la iglesia?
Ven aquí, ¿quieres que me responda eso? Está bien, voy a tomar esa. Así que porque es un negocio de retail y pagamos impuestos de ventas, tenemos que tenerlo como una entidad separada de nuestra iglesia 501(c)(3). Así que es su 501(c)(3) y tiene un dueño y eso es la iglesia, eso es nosotros. Lo poseemos legalmente, es nuestro, Kevin lo maneja para nosotros, él es el visionario detrás de ello. Pero es poseído por Copper Hills, está bajo la bandera de Copper Hills, pero tiene que, por motivos legales, ejecutar como una 501(c)(3). Así que espero que eso responda a eso. Está bien, está bien, así que hemos hablado de la equipo de dudado.
Este, Kevin, tienes que responder a este porque es todo tú. Kevin, en todo caso, ¿puede por favor hacer que Boston Strong sea un item permanente? Cuerpo, es un corazón, corazón y manos rezadoras.
No, Kevin, no tienes que decir nada sobre eso. Está bien, está bien, así que ese es el equipo de dudado, ¿verdad? Y luego pensamos en cómo vamos a ayudar a las personas que se mudan de dudar a explorar. Y Matt, voy a tener que quevarte y presentar a esa equipo, aquellos que están aquí y no enfermos y no están ejecutando el equipo y todo eso. Así que este es Matt Paddock, por cierto. Sí.
Sí, no sabía que podía hacer que alguien haga un video para mí, eso hubiera sido mucho más fácil. Tengo gente que viene, ven, ustedes pueden hacerlo. Las personas que siempre están en el back no se sienten como si vinieran aquí, pero...
Sí, pero van a hacerlo, van a hacerlo.
Están en su camino. Les presentaré cuando lleguen, todos cuando lleguen. Ben, que es nuestro pastor de adoración, está muy enfermo y ha estado durante bastante tiempo, así que voy a rezar por él para que no pudiera estar aquí esta noche, así que voy a hablar por él. Pero aquí está la equipo, tenemos a Nicole, ella es nuestra directora de compromiso. Amy, nuestro director de comunicaciones. Garrett, nuestro director de producción, líder, perdí las palabras que iba a decir. Y luego Zoe, que es nuestra productora de tecnología. Así que esta es la equipo con la que trabajo y voy a dejarlos caer, no tienen que estar aquí todo el tiempo, así que es un poco raro. Sí, sí. Pero sí quiero decirles un poco sobre la equipo en general, así que voy a elegir específicamente a Nicole y su rol. La rol de Nicole es nueva aquí, es algo que creamos después de ver la necesidad de que la gente se involucre. Siento que necesito asegurarme de que te sientas como si te estuvieran viendo también. Para que la gente se involucre aquí en Copper Hills y ella ha hecho algún trabajo increíble en ayudar a hacer eso pasar. Todo desde el centro de conexión, que ustedes han visto, estoy seguro, los lunes a las mañanas, eso es como apenas tocar la superficie. Tenemos grandes planes y sueños de lo que queremos que sea. Solo un gran lugar para las personas cuando entran en las puertas por primera vez, pueden ver visualmente, hey, puedo ir allí y obtener información. Puedo ir allí y hablar con alguien, puedo aprender más sobre la iglesia, puedo inscribirme en algo. Incluso si alguien el lunes pone su fe en Jesús por primera vez, simplemente no saben qué hacer, ese sería un gran lugar para ellos en el futuro, que puedan ir a hablar con alguien y comenzar una especie de conversación relacional sobre lo que significa seguir a Jesús verdaderamente. Podemos conseguir la Biblia en sus manos y comenzarlos en un camino de seguir a Jesús verdaderamente. Así que el centro de conexión es un gran sueño que está en proceso para nosotros. Una cosa que ustedes han visto también en cuanto a la participación es Team Link, si recuerdan, hace unas semanas. Eso fue algo nuevo para nosotros como iglesia también con el deseo de ver a la gente realmente involucrada a través de servir. No seremos consumidores, sino que seremos contribuyentes en lo que el trabajo que Dios está haciendo aquí y realmente entrar y servir de esa manera. Y hombre, tuvimos una respuesta increíble a eso. Nicole y yo habíamos establecido lo que pensábamos que era un objetivo lofto, de tener a 50 personas asistir a nuestra primera. No sabiendo cuántas de esas personas realmente se involucrarían, solo queríamos que vinieran y aprendieran, como aprender más sobre el corazón que tenemos para lo que significa servir. Bueno, tuvimos 40 o algo personas registradas y, ya sabes, estábamos emocionados por eso, pensamos que unos extras aparecerían, pensamos que podríamos llegar a esos 50. Y luego tuvimos 80 personas que aparecieron a Team Link por la primera vez. Y no estoy muy seguro de los números exactos de cuántas se involucraron, pero es que mucha gente se involucró en servir, una influcción. Así que realmente tengo un sueño donde planeamos hacer esto regularmente en ritmo, así que una vez por trimestre, así que tres veces al año. Y si pudimos conseguir 40 o 50 personas tres veces al año a lo largo de muchos años, entrando en el servicio, entonces deberíamos tener una iglesia llena de servantes y realmente establecer el tono de la servanthía aquí en Copper Hills, así que estoy muy emocionado por eso. En el lado de la adoración, como mencioné, Ben no pudo estar aquí esta noche, tenía planeado algo que iba a compartir, pero compartir algo que estoy emocionado. Una de las cosas que estoy realmente emocionado es que tenemos a Mudd McKinley, si lo conoces. Él ha unido a nuestra equipo como director de música por primera vez, él es el tipo que toca la guitarra, habla en ese micrófono que no puedes oír. Es porque está diciendo a la banda lo que deberían y no deberían estar haciendo en el escenario realmente. Él está haciendo un gran trabajo de construir excelencia dentro de nuestro equipo desde el lado de la música. Y luego tenemos a Zoe, que acabas de conocer, ambos sirven en roles nuevos para ellos. Pero lo que amo de lo que están haciendo aquí... But what I love about what they're doing here is they, they grew up in this church. They were, they were part of this church for a long time prior to coming on staff. And we've got a couple of young people who are really deciding to pour their lives into ministry for the first time, and I'm excited to see what God does in them, but also how He uses them to help raise the bar of excellence with what we do with creative arts. So I'm super excited about that, so.
That's great. You know what, you know what's so cool too? Is you and Nicole and Allen have grabbed hold of that parking thing that we've got going on. That's been such a challenge for us, and it's so cool to see what's happening.
That's a great kind of representation of Team Link. And so, Alan was, man, he's a rock star, he's out there every week by himself. You know, we had a couple of other kind of scraggly guys. So I would say we had like, two and a half people on that team for a long time. Well, one Team Link, we went from two and a half people to 15 people who have decided they want to jump in, and most of them showed up for a training night just a couple of weeks ago. And then they were excited about coming to, if you came on Sunday, you saw some of the new stuff, right, just some of the signs to bring clarity to parking. We have the first time guest parking, which is just a great opportunity to, to let guests know that we care that they showed up and we created a spot for them. The other thing that was really awesome about that is just a small little bit of information. If, if you heard me talk about our parking issues or even our seating issues in here, what I'm excited about is after doing all this work and strategy, if we maximize the parking we have available to us on Maya and on BlackRock, we will run out of space in this building before we run out of parking space. And so, the, the growth of the team and the strategy behind how we actually do parking was key in helping us make sure that we would always have enough parking for people if they, if they showed up on a Sunday morning or for a Christmas Eve or an Easter, we'll always be good to go for them. So I'm excited about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Just a transition quick. Just another Well question.
Okay.
Really quick. What's going on with the Well? No, it's not for you, Kevin, though. All right, so does the Well Coffee make a profit and where's that money used?
Yes. We're going to give a financial statement toward the end, and you will see that it does make a profit. Most of that money will go right back into Well Coffee. Into, there's equipment to be upgraded, there's equipment to be maintained, there's new equipment to purchase, that kind of thing. And so, all that will go back into. And then, there's also projects that Well Coffee does. Projects in the community to help various groups and support them through, sometimes it's just providing coffee, but other times it's providing space and our staff for, for them to be supported as well. So some of those funds go to support the events and mission that the Well... Did I cover that, Kev? Yeah. You bet. All right. So doubting, exploring, and then we believe those explorers are going to find Jesus and experience spiritual life, and then we want to help them grow. So Dave, why don't you come up here? This is Dave McKinley. He's our pastor of Spiritual Formation. He's bringing a friend with him, and he's going to introduce his very special friend.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you, thanks for being here. When I think about these things, I always think, where do I start from, right? This role's kind of new to me, and it's, I try to think in terms of our mission. How do I steward our mission? And if you recall, our mission is to help each other increasingly do the next moment with Jesus by be with, think like, be mistaken for. And so, the two paths we're taking folks down, or really we invite them into, is spiritual practices and life groups. And spiritual practices are just simply, we're helping create frameworks for folks to create space to align their heart with Jesus, to meet Him in the moment. It may affect every moment of the day. And the more you do these practices and get deeper into them, you discover they're not just for you, but they're really for the sake of the world. Scripture tells us that people will be spiritually envious of us because of how we love one another. And you come to realize that I can't be all that I can be on my own, I need others. Therefore, segues right into life groups. That is our community. Our life groups meet on a regular basis, usually fall and summer, take a hiatus in the summertime. Some continue to go. There are several leaders and group members here tonight, thanks for doing that. But we just ask our leaders to invite people into what they're already doing. I don't want to create more work for anyone, but more than likely, you're having a meal and you're sitting around a table with friends and just draw the conversation to what it is or what it's like to be a human and be an apprentice to Jesus while walking in His kingdom. And so, our leaders do that very well. And the best part of this is we're very close to the stories of transformation, right? So what does that look like? It would start something like this. I would ask, how is your conversation with Jesus going? Or how are you flourishing these days, right? One reply, you know, I'm starting my day in silence and prayer, and I'm meeting Jesus in the mundane things of life, like when I'm changing a diaper or I'm on a business call on the phone. Or it's like this. Dave, I'm starting to get back to meditation and prayer, and it just helps me focus my day. I often ask our leaders to ask questions about formation. One question I like a lot is this. What is one truth you have discovered that is a lie that you've been living? And to hear people's stories of lies they've held on to till they're 40 or 50 and finally was able to shake it loose because they know Jesus now. So that's what we get to do. So Matt, tell us about our rhythm of spiritual practices.
Hello, my name is Matt, I'm Little Matt. And yeah, I get to work with Dave. Spiritual practices, there are two ways that we do that at Copper Hills. This is fairly new for us in 2025, and those are through sessions and meetups. So you may have heard of our sessions. These are Sunday afternoon at 12:30, one-hour teachings that we do on one practice from the way of Jesus. So that could be something like Sabbath or prayer, scripture, generosity, hospitality, spiritual conversations. What we're doing is we're defining the be with part of our mission statement to show people how we can intentionally be with Jesus. And we look at, how did Jesus do that practice? How is that practice modeled for us in scripture? And then someone is going to share from their personal experience, here is what that practice looks like in my life. And then we do meetups, which are smaller relational environments that will follow one of those teachings. So if the teaching was on generosity, then the meetup would be a small group of people getting together to share, here's how I practice generosity in my life. And someone might say, well, you know, I'm a single parent, and so like my life and finances look different than someone else, how am I going to practice generosity? Or with Sabbath? Well, you know, this is what my work situation looks like. How are you guys practicing Sabbath with a similar work situation? And so, it's ways that we can get together and have relational encouragement with those practices. So you should totally sign up for a Sunday session or one of those meetups, and we'd love to see you there.
That's great.
Quick question. Would it be possible to record or livestream the spiritual practices worship?
Would it be possible?
Yeah.
It would be possible, and someday we will get there.
Why are you rubbing my back?
I don't know. So, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Would it be fair to say at the heart of spiritual practices is community? And you can't do community electronically. You have to be in the same airspace, don't you?
Yeah. Yes, you do.
And so, at that point, it becomes information, which is really valuable information, but you miss the community piece.
Aspects of our, the aspect of our sessions is how did Jesus practice the session? How did Jesus practice this practice or habit, right? How do we see it in scripture? And there's always time for reflection. We do ask questions. We don't ask for your answers sometimes, sometimes we do. But there's moments where we're together that we sit with Jesus, we listen, we sit with Jesus, we listen some more, we pray, and then we share. And so, that wouldn't be captured very well on video, so.
Perfect. All right, thank you, guys. Come back to it. All right. So the next area is centered. So doubting, exploring, growing, close, centered. Matt and I have set a goal for ourselves, I'm kind of leading the charge on that, to think through how do we develop leaders here at Copper Hills? How do we reproduce the life that Jesus is living in people who also have some leadership, giftedness and interest? And we set a goal for ourselves of beginning of January of next year to have a plan for that. One of the advantages of this kind of growth track, a ministry process, is you're able to evaluate each one of those areas and say, okay, we're, we're doing okay on that, and here's the measurement for that. This would be an area that we see growth for ourselves, that we can intentionally invest in some leaders, and that's why we want to pay some attention to that going into next year. We think it's an area of growth for us to be able to do that. All right, so next is family life. And Kev, this time you do have to come up here. We think of family life as Copper Hills kids and then next gen. And so, Kev, you look after our children from birth through...
I do, yeah. I want to, I know that this is being filmed and more people will be watching this online, but just real quick, if you're part of family life in some way, shape, or form, will you stand up real quick? I want to show you something. Look how massive. This is incredible. Look how many people are here to represent. So, I love you guys so much. I can't tell you how incredible we are equipped with these leaders. And something I want to tell you about family life is, I wrote it down a little bit here of what we're doing, because I, I don't like to speak very well, and I don't like kids. So it works really well. I'm just kidding, I do, I do like to speak. You know, our ministry exists, we didn't come up with this ministry, but it's the most passionate thing that I can think of. I'm so honored. It's the most important ministry of all these ministries we talk about. This is our future. And you understand and you see how the world is, and they're going to be shown just endless numbers of doors that lead away from truth. But there is one door, there is one name that leads to life and eternal life. And we want to get our kids with them, and we have just incredible leaders to help do that. We want to help these kids where they're at do the next moment. Not one day, not future day, but the next moment, the next day, this day, to be with Jesus. We want to understand who Jesus is and what He's doing and how He loves them and sees them. And we want them to start, as they're with Jesus, they're starting to think, and they're starting to ask questions, and they're starting to see how Jesus looks at things. And think about how many years it was before Jesus came on this earth that the world did not know their Father, they did not know the Way, they did not know the Truth, they did not know the Life or the Light. It took Jesus to be there, to be with Jesus for us to get it. And so, we have to get the kids with Jesus, and that's what we're working on. And I want to let you know a few things, that we are guided and we are led by the Holy Spirit. And it's with Jesus. And if you want to know about our curriculum and where it comes from, it's the Bible. Who thought that that would be the way we go? But it's the Bible. We are looking and helping the kids walk through living scripture, the living Word, and help them understand it at the way and the path that they can understand it. And one thing about our team is we don't have this big, huge team of, of, of paid staff. That's not how we are. We're called to it, it's a very small staff, but it's a huge staff of volunteers. The volunteers execute what we do. And if you could just see what I could see and the volunteers that are here, you would see how much they themselves can testify to the Lord in their lives and what He's doing. And from that, they, they give out. They use their talents, their time, their energy, their focus, and they come and they love so, so well. And they recognize kids where they're at, and they, they, they talk to them and love them and play with them and help them and encourage them, and it's just the most beautiful thing. Those are the things I want you to know about this ministry. We are super big on worship. Worship is so beautiful because of song and music and where are the words and the scriptures that they're, they're singing from. We help them walk through that, we help them understand what, what those songs are. We help them learn motions and sign language, we help them like really, really walk in those paths, and then they even create their own worship of what God's doing in their life. We help walk with them all the way through. I could go on forever, but you're just going to have to come see me. I know a coffee shop, and so if you want to come over and have some coffee with me, this is my open invitation every single year. Come and see. You'd be blown away. Come and see. Ask questions, challenge us, and ask what the trajectory is. What is it that you care about? What are you doing? How are you leading the kids? What do you do to walk with them? What are the big things? And you need to come see and, and just watch. Watch how they learn, how they love, how amazing they are, and how much we care about them. And parents, we're also here with you. We want to help and walk alongside with you in all kinds of ways, shapes, and forms, and help you be the best equipped that you can be. We're in this together. That's all I got.
Glad you brought your glasses with you, though.
Glasses. This is just with Jesus. We gave them these glasses and said that they can see through Jesus's eyes. And of course, Jesus didn't need glasses, but we sure do. We need help, don't we? We need help for sure. And so, the kids have been walking and talking about what it is to look through Jesus's eyes, how would we look at things differently? It gives them new hope, it gives them new vision, and it makes a difference. Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions. As, one, the first one is what percentage of the budget is dedicated to family life?
Oh, man. I would have to get back to, I wouldn't give an accurate answer. I don't know what percentage that is, but we'll get back to that person. Yeah.
And the other question is, has the church found a new person to replace Heather's role? If so, is there an approximate date on when they're planning on starting with their new opportunity?
Good question, right, Kev?
Yeah, we have some really good news. We had several people apply in this, and we just kind of wanted to make sure that we honored Heather the best we could. She did such an amazing job with her love and her heart and her passion and drive. So grateful for her. And so, we had some time to ramp up and really do a lot of praying, a lot of getting ready and interviewing and going through this process. And it's been a silent, quiet, but I will say this, we have selected the person, but I can't tell you today, because we want to do it in a, when this person's here and we can... But we do have a person selected for the early childhood director. We've also brought along and elevated a bunch of our teams where we have all these different areas. We have check-in, pre-K, kindergarten, walkers, first and second grade, third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade. The, the teams work from A week and B week, and there's first and second, third service. So there's a lot of volunteers. In fact, there's over 200 volunteers to make this up, and we need more. And in that, we've looked and asked people who really, really have a heart for this, and we've asked them to step up and be captains. So we have volunteers that are now stepping up and being a team lead captain in those areas to help facilitate and direct and disciple the people that are on their teams. So we've leveled up and put a lot of positions together, and we're really excited. In the next couple of weeks, you're going to hear and get to meet our new early childhood director.
Yes, very excited about that. Thank you, Kevin.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Kev has, you can leave now, go. Kev has been our kids pastor for 12 years, which is amazing, because the average kids pastor lasts three Sundays, which is really amazing. But what's really cool is to see little kids that were, you know, there when Mr. Kevin was their pastor as kids, they're, they're now here. And that connection to Kevin and what he's done is still very real for them. It's fantastic to watch that. All right, Brian, you're up, buddy. This is Brian Dean, he's our student pastor.
All right, hello, everybody. My name is Brian, I'm the student pastor here at Copper Hills. And once Kevin gets all the kids all the way through, we take him and start doing the real work with it. I'm just kidding. So I, I get to help oversee our Copper Hills Student Ministry, better known as Chisholm, if you can pronounce that, it's a fun way to, to say it. So what we do is we exist to help 6th through 12th grade students be with, think like, and be mistaken for Jesus. And so, the vision isn't different from our whole church, but we get to do this with this select group of students, because these are really transformational, formative years, and we love walking alongside the uniqueness of what these students are going through. So I'll invite you to think back of what it was like for you when you were in junior high and what it was like for you when you were in high school. What were you experiencing? What was changing around you? What pressures were you facing? All of those things. And so, it's a joy to get to walk with these kids in this intentional way. So I'd love to share a couple of updates with you guys about our student ministry, what we've been up to, as well as some of our vision for the next year. And first, I'd just like to say thank you to all of the volunteers who volunteer at Chisholm, doing all of our Sunday experience from our, our check-in to all the things that happen on stage and in the tech booth, and then really well, a special place in my heart for our small group leaders who walk weekly with our students. And so, our purpose is to help kids be with, think like, and be mistaken for Jesus. And the way that we execute that is through small groups here at Copper Hills Student Ministry of getting kids plugged in to a group where they can safely explore and walk through and bring their questions, bring the pressures, bring everything that they're walking through in this unique season of life to a trusted adult in a group of peers. And they can do that in the safety of Copper Hills Student Ministry. So a couple of updates for you. Earlier this year, we expanded our junior high ministry to include sixth grade as well. We kind of took them from kids ministry because we love them so much and we wanted them. But we're realizing that kids are experiencing a lot of these older adults type of pressures earlier in life than in previous generations. And so, we've incorporated sixth grade into our junior high ministry as a way to help prepare and equip them with the season that they're walking through as well. And so, that has been an amazing, amazing addition of seeing our junior high ministry kind of flourish with the addition of sixth grade in there as well. Other things that are going on too, we have a lot of new small group leaders that are coming onboard and leaders from all kinds of demographics. My favorite question that I get asked from people who are interested in leading a small group is, am I too old to do student ministry? And the answer is always no. I haven't found yes to that question yet. So try me, you can come and volunteer and serve with us. But what a joy it is that these students get to walk alongside older adults from different generations. We know that as kids leave high school, that's a really, really pivotal time where some students will drop away from their faith. But studies have shown and my personal experience has shown as well, I've seen that things that keep kids in church and plugged in is that they have had an older adult who follows Jesus, who loves and cares for them, that's not a member of their family. And we get to do that at Copper Hills Student Ministry through our small groups. So that's amazing. There is another member of the Copper Hills Student Ministry team. She couldn't join us today, she's not feeling well. But we have just brought on a student ministry intern to the team. Her name is Sydney. And Sydney is a senior in our ministry right now at Sunrise Mountain High School. But we have a lot of students who are interested in going into vocational ministry, which is absolutely amazing. And Sydney is one of those who we've seen, who's very passionate. And so, as part of the leadership development as well as part of our vision, Sydney is now a part of our team as she grows and develops into a leader of leaders as well. So really, really excited for that. Here are some of the things that we're looking at for this year of our big vision. There's kind of two big things is, one, we want to continue equipping students to trust and follow Jesus with their whole lives and equipping them to take notice and take interest of their friends. And here's how we're doing that. We're not only talking about it with them, challenging them to do that, coaching them on it, but we want to create opportunities for them to take notice and take interest. So we're doing these new big nights and alternative nights throughout the year to make the easiest invite opportunities for a friend who doesn't go to church to come onto our campus and see what Copper Hills Student Ministry is all about. We did one a couple of weeks ago called Slides and Sliders and it was an amazing event. We had over 140 students from the community come out, over 30 of those were new students. And so, our kids are stepping up and taking leadership, which is absolutely amazing. We have a ton of students who are serving as well. If you look in our student ministry and then in the kids ministry as well, you'll see sixth through 12th graders getting involved and taking notice and taking interest in that way too. So that's really special. And then the other thing that we're continuing to do is driving our small groups. They're really the heart and soul of our ministry. Again, getting kids connected to a safe, trusted adult that can be a role model for them as they're learning how to follow Christ. And so, we structure our gatherings around it, we structure our time and our planning around that and always recruiting more volunteers. So if you're interested in seeing the next generation trust and follow Jesus, again, you're invited to that conversation. I'd love to meet with you and tell you what it's like. But that's what's happening in our student ministry. Thank you for your support, thank you for those who helped donate to our fundraiser earlier this year. We had amazing summer camps out of that and we have more camps to come with the remainder of those funds. So thank you.
Well done. You're such a good leader, buddy. You really are. All right, Matt, Matt Sapp, Dave's special friend. Does double duty around here. So tell us about our young adults.
Hello again. Yeah, the word, the phrase "next generation" is often used to describe what Brian and I do. And I take issue with that phrase. I really don't think that our junior high students, our high school students, or especially our young adults are the next generation of followers of Jesus who are leaders in the kingdom. I think they are the current generation of leaders in the kingdom. And I love getting to see how Jesus is working in the lives of 20-somethings in our church. So the way that our young adult ministry works is my gracious and patient and dedicated wife, Megan, and I host our young adults group at our house. We eat dinner together, we go to Scripture together and we share what's going on in our lives. And what we talk about at Young Adults is how we can experience the whole gospel transforming our whole lives for our whole lives. And what that means to us as we apply be with, think like, and be mistaken for in a young adult context is for someone to see the whole good news of Jesus, that Jesus is the risen King and Lord who brought the kingdom of God through his life, his death, his resurrection, and that when we turn to Jesus in faith, we receive forgiveness for our past, transformation in our present and hope for our future that actually shapes every area of our life. And so, one way that we're applying that is we have five of our young adults right now who are currently being mentored by five older adults in our church and they're going through seven areas of their life. Their work, their relationships with people in their lives, whether that's family relationships or friends or a romantic relationship, their finances, the resources that God has given them, their intellect and their mind, their physical health. Looking at how does the good news of Jesus and the truth of God's Word shape every area of my life so I can be an ambassador for Jesus where I live, where I work, where I study and where I play? And then, so transforming their whole life for their whole life. Like Brian just shared, we are so passionate about intergenerational interaction. I think so often we split up demographics and I love that Copper Hills, we're starting to create a culture where we get to see the body of Christ of different groups of people coming together. And so, our young adults are starting to lead and serve in different ministries in our church and we're getting to see more of our older adults who are making dinner for our young adults group. Thank you for that, by the way, who are stepping up as mentors for young adults. And so, so thankful for that. And I just want to tell you just real quick about one way that one of our young adults is living as an ambassador for Jesus's kingdom and her name is Ashley. So I don't need to go into detail on the events of last week and the shooting of Charlie Kirk. Ashley is one of our young adults who decided the way that I want to respond to this is instead of spreading any kind of hate in the world, I want to be someone who shows the world the truth of God's peace and hope that I have right now. And I want to be a light for Christ and use this as an opportunity to lead and to speak out. And so, Ashley just reached out to people in her community and hosted a public worship night in a park and met people and was telling people, this is how I'm responding and this is what I'm doing. And I loved seeing in that moment how she stepped up as a leader. So thank you so much for supporting our young adult ministry.
Thanks, ma'am. Love your passion. Then there is a team of people that provides support for those ministries. And I want to introduce Nikki to you. Nikki is our executive director. Up till about a month or so ago, Jim Shirk would have been filling this role. But we're so glad to welcome you, Nikki. Jim and Lori have moved to Prescott and he's been commuting the last several months to help us out. And after a lengthy search and the right search and the right way, Nikki, we found you and you found us and we're so delighted to have you here in this role. You'll hear a little more from Nikki in a little bit, but introduce your team, those that are here.
Okay, hello.
There you go.
I'm Nikki Ancheff and I work in the admin operations. And what we do is support all of these ministries and help them do what they need to do. Up on stage, we have here, I think our largest part is facilities. So we have our facilities and events director, Michelle, followed by James Knapp, who's a facilities manager. He's pretty new here. We also have Carrie, who couldn't be with us tonight, is our facilities coordinator. And then we also have Cody and Maddox, who help with facilities as well. They're busy working tonight. And then we have Sheila, our administrative assistant, who helps all of us do everything. And then also couldn't be with us tonight, but we have Debbie Webb, who's our finance administrator. And then Kimberly, who's our finance admin.
Yeah, wonderful. All right, thank you. So our friend Jim is in Hawaii tonight. Suffering for Jesus, I'm sure. But he wanted to, because he's most familiar with the financial picture where we're at, we asked him whether he would do a short video message and then he's going to talk us through the financial statement. And so, here's, here's Jim.
Good evening, I'm Jim Shirk. I'm the executive director here at Copper Hills. My apologies for not being able to be with you in person, but I will be able to present the financial results for Copper Hills, the Center for the Arts and the Well Coffee Company. We'll do that by having a voiceover of some information I've prepared and you'll get to hear the melodious tones of my segment I call Fun with Financials. In terms of questions, Brad and Nikki will be able to address those at the end of the presentation. Nikki is Nikki Ancheff. She is our new executive director, my successor, and we are in really good hands. She has already blessed our team and she will be a blessing to the church as she takes over my role and responsibilities. For me, my wife and I have moved to Prescott a while ago to take our hand at Country Life, raising donkeys, goats, chickens on a little mini farm. So we're going to be saying goodbye to Copper Hills and that makes us really sad. You have blessed us so much over the last five years. It's been a great ride with this team. I've been very excited to be part of this team and life groups and this church family and we are going to miss you all very, very much. Thank you for your support, your friendship and your fellowship. And now, onto Fun with Financials. As is tradition, we'll start Fun with Financials by talking about attendance. As you'll be able to see on the screen, our average weekly attendance, when we factor in family life and students, is now over 1,200 people each Sunday. When we look back, that is amazing, given the fact that we had ungathered in 2020 and have grown from average attendance of 500 to that 1,200 figure. In comparing year over year, we are 6% in in-person attendance over 2024 figures and a resounding 22% growth from 2023. It is amazing how Jesus is bringing people onto his campus to hear his word. Now we move to the financial results for fiscal 2025. As a reminder, Copper Hills runs an academic fiscal period from August to July, which matches the programming for most of our major ministries as well as our Center for the Arts. As you'll see in the table below, our income has exceeded 3.1 million over a budget of 3.05. We had, we received 3% more than we had anticipated. This generosity from the church family and various donors continues to amaze us. We are so blessed by the generosity and commitment of all of you to the Copper Hills Ministries. These figures include 64,000 for international mission causes as well as nearly 16,000 to community care. We continue to be amazed by how Jesus is working through these dollars that you are donating. On the expense side of the ledger, we continue to maintain strong stewardship in the various ministries. As you will see, we only spent 95% of our allocated budget, spending 2.89 million against a budget of over 3 million. What is really encouraging is that we've directed over 600,000 to our existing loans this past fiscal year, with 162,000 of that going to principal pay down. That is the third consecutive year we've continued to pay down our debt for this facility. And as you will see, as a result, we have a surplus of over $267,000, which we currently plan to use for future campus-related projects. Let's continue talking about the financial results now for the Center for the Arts and Well Coffee. As you'll see on the left part of the screen, the Center for the Arts continues to grow. Our income was just slightly beneath budget, but the expenses were well beneath. We've continued to have strong stewardship in the Center for the Arts while maintaining its growth. In fact, this is the seventh consecutive year that the Center for the Arts has continued to grow its income. And more importantly, the expense side of things has been significantly lower than we expected, with the expenses being flat almost year over year. For the Well Coffee Company, it was an explosive year of growth. We grew over 11%. Most of that attributed to the completion of Well Project Four and the atrium area, providing additional seating and gathering spots for our community. Impressively, the total expenses were essentially the same last year despite inflationary factors on many of the Well Company's supplies. So we continue to see God work through these two outreach ministries. Now, as we move forward, we're going to look at the fiscal 2026 budget. The first thing I want to mention is that when we look at the budget, we look at the vision and the mission of Copper Hills as the primary drivers of our budgeting process. We prayerfully look at our income from the previous year, look at our expenses and balance that from a data perspective with faith to determine what is going to be the best figures to budget across the various ministries. So as you will see, we are going to be budgeting $3.23 million in fiscal 2026. That is a 2% increase over the 3.1 that we budget, that we actually realized in fiscal 2025. Our expenses, we're actually planning for an 11% increase in our expenses. You might ask why? The main factor of that is the continued growth of this campus and the increased usage. As you can imagine, keeping our space open for the community is going to result in higher expenses as we have to control the climate, as we have to light and maintain access to the facility, as well as we're having to address different growth factors. As I mentioned in the attendance slide, growth continues to be a big factor for Copper Hills. So we're having to look at various expenses around parking and transportation needs. You have all experienced our golf carts and our very challenged parking situation. So we're going to be investing in more transportation needs and enhanced signage for folks that are coming for the very first time. We're also including funding for expanded programs. The programs that Dave has outlined in the spiritual practices, things that Matt and Nicole are doing with Team Link, expanding our serving opportunities and things that Kevin is doing in the family life area around parenting classes. We've included that additional funding in. So not only is the increased funding towards operating expenses, but it's also towards expanded ministry opportunities across the Copper Hills environment. And one other factor that we're including in our expenses are the anticipated continuation of just higher costs. We all have had higher bills at home and we're imagining that we're going to have that continue. We want to be prudent stewards in an uncertain economy. So we've built in some additional monies to continue to combat inflation and other factors. So with that, we have concluded the Fun with Financials portion of this. Nikki and Brad will be available to answer any questions and I thank you for your attention to this.
All right, yeah, you can thank him. He's an amazing guy. He has served this church so incredibly well. His ability to put in systems and processes and so on, I'm just so grateful for him. And we will miss him and Lori a lot, but we're grateful to have you, Nikki. We really are. All right, there might be some questions. Let me pick up one that was earlier so we weren't bouncing back and forth. Somebody asked the question whether our baristas were Jesus followers? And Kevin, I think I would be correct in saying yes, they are. Yeah, for sure, they're on the spectrum, but, but yes, they are. Yeah. The other thing I wanted to say is there are so many other ministries that are going on that weren't on that circle. Those were the primary catalysts in each one of those areas. But we have a ministry to challenged adults. We have a ministry to our folks who are just slightly older than 50. Prime, we have grief share, there's men's Bible studies, women's Bible studies. And it wasn't to leave them out, it was just to say those were the primary catalysts. And then in each one of those other areas, there's other ministries that we have as well. So. No questions? Questions in the house?
Actually, we got some.
Oh, we got one.
What is the total debt?
Yeah.
It's more associated with the budget growth for 2026. Are coffee and arts included into 3.2 million revised church budget or separate?
Okay. We carry a debt of about 4.8 million, I think is what it is. You might have noticed that we paid down additional principal. We put $615,000 as a church into interest and principal. So the one number said we had 100, I think 169 or 170,000 dollars we put into principal. That's above. That's above the expected interest and principal that we were going to. So it's been, we were able to reduce that debt significantly. But I think as we sit right now, it's about 4.8 million that we, we own. The value of our property, if it matters, is about 13.2 million. And the second one was, is Center for the Arts and Well Coffee in that general budget? No, it is not. They, they have a separate budget for each one of those areas, it's not included in that.
Another question that came up, do we anticipate needing to use the school for parking?
It is a possibility to, to do that. We have approached the school and asked them about it, and they're willing to work with us. We think our solution that Matt and Nicole have come up with is actually more viable and more efficient than transporting people from the school over here. We think parking on the street is a closer proximity and a more natural place to park than being redirected to the school and then taken a shuttle from the school here. So it's our hope that this fall, we're gonna, we're gonna be successful in this parking plan. We have the school on pause, that if this doesn't work and we need to, that is a possibility to explore that. Yeah. That's, the street is free, the school costs us a little bit of money. Yeah, that's right, thank you.
Another question come in, they're coming in hot now. Will the church ever plan some opportunities for church-wide volunteering and/or doing things like food drives together to serve the community?
We do, as opportunity and leadership is there, you bet. We already do some of that. So every Thursday, there's a group of people that take really well-prepared lunches to people in our community who are struggling with cancer. Every week, we take out 26 to 30 meals to people. They're prepared by a group called Joybus, and a group of guys travel down to their restaurant where they make these, bring it up here, and they put it in wonderful decorated bags to deliver it, and they take it out to people and pray with people. That, that's one of the things that we do already. And so we look for opportunities, but not just opportunities, we look for opportunity that has leadership attached to it.
We have some budget questions here. How does the church approach reserves? How many months of operating expenses do we have right now?
Yeah. We have cash reserves for operating expenses of two months in place. Additionally, we have $100,000 set aside for future church planting, because we hope to do that at some point. We have an additional 75 set aside in reserve for a, if a major piece of equipment would fail, we're able to replace that. We have 20-ton air conditioners that cool this room, and one of those, if that goes out, that's a $25,000 hit. And so we keep that for major kinds of mechanic. And, you know, initially, when your building's new, you don't think about that. But this building's almost 10 years old, and so those kinds of things can come into play. We have some reserves that, so we have some funds in a general missions budget that, again, we look for opportunities, mission opportunities to be able to support groups, so that's in there. Yeah, that, that's, but in terms of operating expenses, we have two months on hand.
A couple more, are, is money budgeted for ministries like women's, men's, Prime, et cetera?
Yeah, so the way that we do that is a couple of things. One is, if a ministry needs some capital to rent a facility to do a retreat or to do those kinds of things, we'll front that money, and then it comes back in terms of registration costs and so on. The majority of our adult ministries are, we try to have them self-supporting as much as we can, but there are times where we will also provide resources if there's some unique thing that they're doing.
Okay, switching gears a little bit, still related to financials, I would imagine. What percentage of growth in attendance is expected for next year?
Yeah. This is off the top of my head, so I am not entirely sure what that, that number is. I believe that we are predicting like a 10% increase. But there's, there's some things that are coming down the road that actually would facilitate that 10% that we'll be talking about the weeks ahead.
Then we shifted gears into what missions, outside missions are we involved with and that we're a part of?
Yeah. So we are involved in, our emphasis in our missions giving budget involvement has been in church planting. There's a real affinity here at Copper Hills because we were a church plant, a pioneering church plant, and there's just been an interest in that area. So when it look, when we look at international missions, we have looked for opportunities where churches are being planted by people who are from that region or that country. So we're currently involved in Ireland, an Irish, two Irish couples are planting a church in their hometown of Limerick. We are, we are helping a church in Budapest, Hungary. We're helping a church in Croatia, and that mission couple will be here in October with us, and we'll get to meet them for the very first time. And we're also involved in, have been for a number of years, a church in Romania. And those are the four places right now that we're involved internationally. We have in the past helped in Rocky Point, building houses in Rocky Point, and some of our Native American population in northern Arizona. But internationally, those are the four areas.
I have a question from Matt Sapp. Matt? There you are. All right. Matt, so it was stated that people needed to help provide dinner for young adult, for the young adult group. Is there a sign up to join to help provide those dinners?
I, I promise I didn't plant that question. I think there's a real person in here who wants to do that. Yes, please go ahead and just email me at matt@copperhills.org, and I would love to get you connected and meet up and talk about how you can serve. Thank you so much for wanting to do that.
That's a great question. All right, we, our feed goes dark in three minutes here. So I want to say this, if there are further questions that you have, continue to text that number, or you can contact, well, contact me. My email address is brad@copperhills.org. I will make sure those go to the right place and you get an answer for those. If you want more detailed financial information, if that's your thing, you can have that. Just, again, let me know, and we'll make sure that you get a more comprehensive financial picture of who we are and what we're about. For the simplicity of our gathering, we summarize it the way we do. That doesn't mean the rest isn't available, it's just for summary purposes tonight. If you're interested in that, this is, it's your church. You should have access to all of that information. All right. So I want to pray with us, and thank you very much for coming tonight and watching online now, Jesus. As we started at the beginning, we declared the truth that this is your bride, this is your family, it's your church. You own her, you love her, we defer to you at all times, we, we love your leadership and we trust your leadership. Would you continue to reveal yourself to us? And would you use us to reach this community, this city for you? We pray this thousands of times already, Jesus. Would you create here a church you've always dreamed would exist? And let us be spectators to your grace as we see that unfold. Thank you for what you are doing and who you are. Amen. Thank you for coming. Good night, everybody.